Good afternoon. This is the Newcastle County Council Technology Subcommittee meeting. The Chair, Robert Weiner. This is 1:30 PM on Tuesday, April 15, 2014. We're in the eighth floor conference room of the City-County Building. This is an advertised meeting. Because there is not a quorum of County Council members present, we'll simply take notes rather than formal meeting minutes. This is being both audio-recorded and video-recorded. The people around the table, I'll let them go around and introduce themselves and also their title and function.
Lou Henkel, Legislative Aide, County Council. Councilman Robert Weiner's office.
Daniel Sheerquest, Executive Office.
Reed McMillan, Land Use Administrator, Land Use Department.
Jim Ayersman, Senior Network Engineer, Newcastle County.
Joe Roberto, Land Use Administrator, Inspections Manager.
Fabrice Dubac, Diamond Technologies.
Member of the public, and another member of the public?
Chief Serna.
Valerie George, Legislative Aide.
And also staffer.
With County Council.
Yes, with County Council. Thank you Valerie, would you like to join us at the table?
I'm fine, just need to get back to stuff.
Okay, great, thanks. So, the meeting minutes from the previous meeting don't have to be approved since we don't have a quorum. Going to start with our agenda. The first item for discussion is an Executor Branch Technology Update. This is by Daniel Sheerquest, Executive Assistant, working directly for the County Executive, and this will drill into a new tool being made available to County Council and its staff, Microsoft Link Instant Messaging, and you'll give us a hands-on demonstration.
Absolutely.
Daniel?
Okay. I have Jim Ayersman, who's one of our senior engineers, who's going to help demonstrate as well, but from over here, I'm going to begin and take it from there. Okay, well, first what we have is Microsoft Link is a unified communication system, and what we wanted to do is, as we're moving forward with technology, we wanted to have a system that would be easy for everyone to use and allow communication to be streamlined a little bit, more efficient than even a telephone. So what an IM does is, everyone that's familiar with IM systems, you can IM somebody. But this is a little bit greater in the sense that you can do meetings, you could do multiple IMs, and you could have group meetings, and even more, you could have video chats. So let's start real quick.
Dan, there's a window open behind that because that's newly installed. It hasn't synchronized with the address book yet, so.
There you go.
Currently is, I sent a test to Lou earlier. From my cellphone, I have an app that matches with the Link client on the PC, and I sent Lou a test a little bit earlier. You can also see the picture at the top left of that window. It has a red bar. I've marked myself as busy in case someone was trying to IM me, but I was in a meeting. They would know that perhaps they should let it go until a later time. I can set it as "Do Not Disturb," that I'm away, whatever, I can put that information in there. But from the app on my phone, let's see if I can send another message.
Audio level, okay.
So I just, that message just came through. I sent that for my iPhone, there are apps, similar app for the Android, I think BlackBerry, though we don't support BlackBerry currently. When all is said and done, you'll be able to video chat from your phone, make a call when the voice-over IP phone system goes online. I would be able to call you at your desk, and you could speak to me through your computer, or we could have a video chat face-to-face that way.
When IM come in, you'll see a little pop-up on the bottom right of your screen, and you can actually ignore somebody if you're in the middle of something, you don't want to see them. The other options are, "Set to Do Not Disturb." What you have, multiple IMs will come up like this. The one that's pending your response will be blinking. Jim is obviously set for busy, but we can respond right back. And I get it right away on my phone. So you don't just have to be on your computer, you can be on your mobile device, your tablet. It really brings communication a lot easier, more modern, and, you know, as Jim was mentioning, some of the newer features that we're going to roll out are voice and video. So we could literally be in the government center, and you could be at your office, and we could have video chats. We could have multiple video chats, multiple people, multiple locations. So it's a pretty exciting technology that we have here. It's not just a basic IM system. It's rolled out as an IM system today, but if you have a video system and microphone system, you could actually have video or just an audio communication with somebody else.
So ultimately, County Council could review its current process, which requires all Council members to be physically present around this table when we have meetings, simply because in the 20th century technology world, you're not really digitally present. It's something for later, but Lou, if you could make a note, once we make a report to our Executive Committee, of which we're a subcommittee, we can take a look at that for the future.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, and a lot of companies in the private world, they do that. So there's no reason to ever actually miss a meeting, even if you're in another state or you're on vacation. If it's an important meeting, you can make it on your phone, you can just jump in, and I have a video camera on my phone, as most people do, so you could jump into a video conference or just an IM system.
Yes, Lou?
I think that there may be a legal issue regarding the use of the phone for that purpose. However, for just informational purposes in a meeting, if another council member were not present, they could, of course, participate in the meeting, but then when it came to taking a vote, I think there's a legal question.
There is no legal limitation, there's simply a council internal rule which allows a councilperson to monitor a meeting but not vote. But that rule could be visited, given the fact that technologies are changing. In fact, in my law firm, which is a national law firm in 15 cities across the country, we have video business meetings. My clients that we represent have video business meetings, and they vote all the time, including boards of directors. So it's a technology that's now making a change in the way that we do business. Continue.
Yes. Daniel, you had mentioned like a similar, like a FaceTime.
Yes.
Thing like that. Is that, are we pushing that to the public, to the public?
That's a good question. This is internal for the government employees only. They have to be on our network, that's how we maintain its security, that's how we know no one else is going to come in and utilize the system. There could be a discussion to open that up to the public, but the way it is now, it's locked into our network, and you cannot use it if you're an outside person.
Okay. The reason why I'm asking is because we recently started doing what we're calling a virtual inspection, where we're going, kind of using Skype, and folks are using their iPhone, or whatever phone that they have, and we are doing some re-inspections where we don't necessarily have to leave the office. So it's a tremendous help for our, you know, the build industry, so to speak, and our customers to be able to go through their phone and show us the areas that we need to, and that's turned into, you know, hopefully, a big success for the future. And with using something like this, I think it could help us, you know, and maybe if we could open, like we have contractor availability, you know, we give the contractors some availability to schedule things online, maybe this is something that we can give a licensed contractor.
Yeah, and I think this is a perfect, you know, perfect way of understanding the product that we have, and talking it out, and now you're mentioning another way that could actually utilize it in a way that we didn't even think about. So it could be done. There might be another product that can handle that better, but it's definitely good to have these conversations, so now we know we have a need for something, and we could, we will have our talks internally to see if we could address that need, otherwise we'll see if there's another product.
All right, great, thank you.
Another question. I'm active in the National Association of Counties, which represents all 3,000 counties in the country. We have electronic, digital, audio, and audio and video meetings all the time that can be interactive as well. You can put yourself available, or moot yourself, or make yourself visually available or not, and it's a great interactive educational forum. For us, as our constituents now are, in many cases, technologically savvy, can we consider having some virtual meetings opportunities for various educational issues, whether it be land use, or public safety, or even issues dealing with just constituent issues in a particular district, when, let's say, land use can't come to a meeting in a council district? We could still virtually have a person there.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a great idea. I think that's technology. I think that's where we're going. I think within land use, there's a lot of plans already to make it a one-stop-shop, and a lot of virtualization, and a lot of cloud, and the use of the Internet. I think just talking it out, there's a million different avenues we can explore. So the future is going to be filled with technology, and these are the building blocks of where we're going to go next. But yeah, absolutely, we can definitely do that, and we should do that.
Good. Lou, if you could have the meeting minutes reflect not only the current use of this as a instant messaging system, but also on the possibilities that Mr. Roberto and I have discussed with the others, Daniel here and others, it'd be helpful. Thank you.
And then, yes?
Is there a need, maybe also, for the availability to record some of those live meetings? And if there are such capabilities, what are the storage requirements that you may need? Because if you were to talk about a topic that is essential, but a few people are not even there, but you want to share with the rest of, maybe the public, or within the administration, an ability for those people to witness some of the outcome of those conversations?
Yeah, I think it's twofold. I think if we were to utilize this product, we would have to find a way to record it and then extract it from our network. The other option is using another device or camera system like, which is present today, and use that. But what we would need to do is first get to that level. We're definitely trying to get there. We're trying to get cameras and being as transparent as possible. The next step would be, how do we handle that data, and secure, and everything that you just mentioned? We're getting there. I think it is, we're not there yet, but we're trying to get there as soon as we can.
Along those lines, the administration has put out a RFP for video equipment that would make many of the places in the county more digitally friendly. Also, I have and I know two other councilpersons, Councilman Tackett and Councilwoman Kilpatrick have also expressed an interest and requested RFIs for the same purpose. So ultimately, this room, for example, as James McDonald and Daniel Sheerquest have described, would have four cameras in the corners, and then, today we have a videographer, but he would be a TD, a Technical Director, and he would be basically selecting the shots to be used to go into the official video, matching up with the audio. And that way, we would not require someone to lug the camera in each time. The council chambers on the first floor already have camera equipment. However, the lights are sort of old technology, and they're very bright. The RFI that Councilwoman Kilpatrick and Councilman Tackett and I have both submitted to purchasing, was asked for, and Daniel has shared the information, would go with lower light settings, so it doesn't need to flare in our eyes right now. The city lights are very, very bright. And we already have camera persons that work for the city of Wilmington. One concept would be that those city camera folks would have a secondary job, if you will, as independent contractors for Newcastle County Council, whereas there would be a separate, private vendor Technical Director for rooms, meetings in this room. Now, as my aide and I are internalizing all the information and working with our fellow councilpersons, this seems to be a direction in which we can go. One of the other things that seems to be easier to do would be to start with video on demand first, which is really much more accessible and could be made searchable, and then video live would be maybe the next baby step. I'm going to be presenting all of these to councilmembers and discussing it as well in advance with the two councilpersons that really launched all this, and I again want to give credit to Councilman Tackett and to Councilwoman Kilpatrick, because their resolution back a few years ago had suggested that we go down that route, and we are headed down that route now. So let's continue.
Sure. One thing I did here when we were talking is I created a quick file, a text file, and it just says "test." And what you can do is, you know, we talked about it, this is a, it's an IM system, but it does a lot more. So what I did was I just literally copied it, and I pasted it into my IM session. Now, it's going to fail because where I'm sending it to, it's not my computer, it's my handheld Android-based phone, but if this was a mobile phone, it would be fine, the text document would come through. So you could actually transfer files on there as well. This is why we want to keep it, you know, secured in the network and not, you know, accessible to outside of our network. But just another feature that we have. Jim actually, you know, he did the groundwork from the beginning, the expertise of designing this and implementing it, so I don't know if there's anything else Jim thinks that we should talk about, or?
Not specifically, only, it's a pretty decent tool. I don't know how widely it's actually being used, although it has been pushed out to everybody's computers, pretty much in the county. It's a good tool for multitasking, sort of, if you're on the phone with, you know, someone from outside, and you're taking a call, but one of your coworkers has a question, but they can't interrupt you, you can instant message back and forth, and you don't have to stop what you're doing. It's helped out immensely that way. And I'm not a huge user of it, because our department is so small, we tend to yell to one another, but in land use, you guys are geographically spread out more, might be a little bit more usable, and it's quicker than sending an email. It's a bit something very, you know, not huge business import, perhaps.
I notice when I'm Skyping, I've got IM on my Skype, and people enter my Skype network that I've allowed in, I instant-message them. So I'm still taking the baby steps when I watch my adult children, they're IMing four people at the same time while they're interfacing in a more traditional email. So it's almost a generational shift, but I notice, although it's limited use, if we could have some hands-on demonstrations with certainly councilpersons and councilstaff. We have one councilstaff member here. Do you feel that councilstaff would benefit from a hands-on demonstration with this? The IMing? Do you use IM at all yourself?
I do, mostly with my adult children.
Right.
But I could see how it would be beneficial, especially if we're having a conversation, Valerie George, Legislative Aide. If I am on the phone with a constituent, and I have an issue that if I can, while I'm on the phone with that constituent, be discussing that with land use or code enforcement, or whoever the appropriate person would be to answer that question, I may be able to address that constituent concern sooner, instead of waiting for email.
Good. Well, I welcome your thoughts on how we can begin to integrate this. And I know, Daniel Sheerquest, you'd emailed each of the staff of council the opportunity to do some hands-on, and, you know, after this meeting and the minutes are posted, I would ask you again to reach out to councilmembers again. Now that we've had one of the staffers here, I think she can help market it to the other staff members.
Yeah, we definitely have it ready to deploy, so I'll definitely send out a follow-up email. The other thing I just want to make clear, it's quicker than email. That's the main thing that we're trying to drive home, and if you're mobile, you're moving around a lot, you're not at your desk, this is the tool for you. It's even faster than email, so.
I was going to make a comment, maybe, to Jim's point, not knowing exactly who would be using the tool. I guess you might want to impose maybe some policies and expect people to use it moving forward. It's a collaborative tool that allows people to be more efficient and more helpful if they're being pinged for some help. So maybe we want to impose ways for people to say, hey, we need to find out whether or not you're available, and therefore, if you're sitting at your desk, you should be turned on, you know, just for the sake of saying you're available, and then make yourself readily available upon people needing you for whatever reason.
Yes.
But most likely for business purposes, and the help of you.
Yeah, state your name again.
Fabrice Dubac.
And then please state your name before you speak.
Okay, Joe Roberto, Land Use Administrator. Is this archival? I mean, can we save the conversation?
There could be methods to do that. We would have to have a little bit more of a game, not necessarily a game plan, but this is, I would say it's a little bit past beta, it's in production, but in regards to archiving and retrieving some old data, we're still at the, it's a little gray as far as where we're going forward. We want to, but it's unofficial at this point, I would say.
Jim Ayersman. Currently, it's not archived yet, because we weren't sure what, how the use would be, how widespread, and as Fabrice had mentioned earlier, there's a certain amount of storage space that would be needed to enable all that archiving, and how much of that would be archived. Do we only save a certain amount of time back? But that, we haven't gone forward with policies, because we're sort of still testing it out.
And could be cloud-based?
Most likely not, because it's internal communications.
Okay.
So I would say no to that.
Okay. Please identify yourself.
Valerie George, Legislative Aide. My question actually was right along those same lines, whether it would be searchable. One of the reasons I use email frequently is because I need to track those conversations and who's involved, and so I would want something that was searchable, trackable, and then that also brings up the question of FOIA. If we're having a conversation about an issue, but it's not archived, then where does FOIA come in?
All very important questions, which I think comes to the reason in government, for legal reasons and archiving reasons. We would want to have the administration take a look at those questions.
Yeah, and then we actually have had many discussions with this, and it goes down to the nature of the conversation. We felt that the IM system was not a place that you're going to have a meeting, but rather, hey, are you around? Can we meet at 10 o'clock? That kind of information we expected the IM system to be used for, but there are some different feelings about that, so that's why I said it's unofficial, we're still kind of in beta, and we want to see how we're going to proceed. A lot of opinions are saying that we want it archived for FOIA reasons.
How many licenses, I'm sorry, Fabrice Dubac, how many licenses or users are we expected to have access to that?
Currently, all of, Jim Ayersman. Currently, all of our users are licensed, so it's somewhere in the neighborhood, between 1,600 and 1,700 licenses currently. It ties in with our email system, so if you do turn on the archiving, there'll be a Conversation History folder inside of your Outlook, so you could go back and see past conversations. As far as searching, because we don't yet have that turned on, I'm not sure what the search mechanism is, you know, we'd have to look at that. The policies would have to be set ahead of that, before we turn that on, you know. That's sort of why we haven't turned it on yet, because the policy hasn't come down from management.
And I just wanted to expand on what Jim was saying.
Daniel Sheerquest.
Daniel, thank you. This is a Microsoft product, so it does hook into Outlook. So if you open up an Outlook, and this is an individual who's internal, who sent you an email, there'll be an icon for it to email them, and there'll be a new icon to send them an IM. And, you know, if we incorporate the VoIP, the VoIP will be there as well, and just little buttons that'll come along. So you'll have the ability to IM someone through Outlook as well.
Thank you. Anything else on this topic before we move to our next topic? Okay, now, the next item on the agenda is Discussion, Land Use Department, Integrated and Streamlined Development Review Process and Shortening Time and Reducing Costs. Reed McMillan, Land Use Administrator. And Reed, if you could introduce your team again as well.
Yes, sir. Reed McMillan, Land Use Administrator, and part of my Technology Committee is Joe Roberto, who is the Inspections Manager in Newcastle County, Department of Land Use. Sir, I thank you for inviting me to this, to this meeting on technology and where we're going in the Department of Land Use. I provided a few slides for you and the rest of the members today, and I'd also have some handouts, if you don't mind, because in case some of the prints not good enough, you can all see. I want to provide a quick overview about where Land Use Department has been going since our new General Manager, Eileen Folbertree, has taken place. She took over Department of Land Use September 2013, and since that time, we've been doing an internal review of our processes to include use of technology. Today's agenda, sir, I want to do a quick technology review, talk about process analysis, and the bottom line up front today is Electronic Plan Review. It's a new technology that we're going to be using, we'd like to use here in the Department of Land Use, to help expedite the land use plan review process. Yes, sir.
Yeah, what was the first thing you said? Technology? What was the next word you said?
Technology review. And then we're going to look at the process analysis, basically how the current land development plan process goes through Department of Land Use, and then the use of Electronic Plan Review Software System, called the EPR System, that we would like to purchase coming up around July 1st on the timeframe.
Thank you.
Quick overview, in October 2013, our first initiative was the process analysis, looking at all the land use sections. As you know, sir, we have historic review, we have engineering, we have inspections, permits, whole plethora of inspections or sections within land use. They have their own unique processing of applications, but they all are tied to the land development plan. So we want to identify what each of these nuances were within these different sections. The second part was the establishment of a Technology Committee, which Mr. Roberto is part of. We also had members from the IS, Brian Donovan, and also Special Services, and two members from the Finance Department, to kind of took a look at the existing software capabilities that are out on the market. You know, we have Hanson 7.7 as a server-based land management process. The technology now is to go to a web-based land management process. We're at the county, we're not there yet, so we need to keep sticking with Hanson 7.7 server-based, but what other software processes are out there that could enhance our Electronic Plan Review, or Land Development Review, and Electronic Plan Review is one of them.
A question.
Yes, sir.
Bob Weiner. Reed, when, if and when we make the switch from Hanson to a strictly web-based system, do you see that as a seamless transition, or whether or not there would be some bumps in that road?
This presentation is not talking about replacing Hanson 7.7 server-based. We are going to use a web-based Electronic Plan Review System that will augment and be able to integrate with Hanson 7.7. Sometime in the future, the County Council and the County Executive may decide to switch over from a server-based system like Hanson 7.7 to a web-based, but that's not what we're doing today in land use.
Thank you.
Newcastle County's server base, as I explained, and we use 7.7. You all are pretty much familiar with 7.7 Hanson, so I'm not going to stand here today and try to articulate the complexities of it, but that first slide up at the top right shows you how Hanson ties in with the various departments and the actions within Newcastle County. The Department of Land Use uses Hanson for a myriad of actions, from code enforcement to permit and inspections. And also, we use Hanson 7.7 for the land development review process. The part of Hanson that we use, the lower graphic highlighted in red, is the Project Planning Application, where land development plans are processed, and also Building Application, when the building permits come in, we have a technician that opens up Hanson, gets all the data into a database, and we use it to archive all the information that's being To give you an idea about how Land Use uses these different systems in Hanson, I'm going to provide you a couple screenshots. The top graphic depicts Hanson Project Planning Application. This tab allows specific land development plans to be manually annotated into the system. The key here is manually. So we have an applicant come in, we take their information, a technician actually types in their data into the Hanson project application. The lower graphic is a sub-tab of that project application, it's called the Subdivision Land Development, or SLD. I know, sir, you're very familiar with this, but this tab, amongst other things, it's I know, sir, you're very familiar with this, but this tab, amongst other things, it specifically dates when a plan is received, reviewed, and approved by the land use staff. Again, manually inputted and updated as changes are made to that land development plan. Most land development plan documents are recorded in the Hanson Project Planning Application, then are uploaded into the App Extender using the same project number. The Newcastle County website pulls information from Hanson 7.7 and also App Extender to allow the information to be viewed by the public. On the website, you can see here. The top graphic shows how land development plan application looks with dropdown capabilities to show the uploaded documents in a PDF format. Again, all these documents are manually uploaded and then are shared on the website, so anybody can take a look at any particular land development plan as it's going through the process. The bottom graph shows how land development plan is processed in the Land Use Office. Basically, Hanson is the center hub, however, all information, again, is manually uploaded into Hanson under the Project Planning Application for that specific plan. The application is physically received in U.S. mail, logged into the system, then it's processed to the planning or engineering supervisor for an assignment to a planner and an engineer. Revisions of the plans are submitted, and documents are physically mailed back and forth to the applicants and back to Newcastle County Land Use. Land Development Improvement Agreements are also manually uploaded into the system, and all documents are manually scanned and uploaded into App Extender, which are linked to Hanson. I guess you can see the theme here is manually uploaded, scanned, and things like this. The process depends on Newcastle County personnel to enter this information and physically receive the mail through the U.S. Postal Service. Now, the current land use development plan process was reviewed. We also looked at the specific parts of the development process within the Unified Development Code. We identified areas for improvement. You might have heard something called Time in Motion. Time in Motion was an Excel spreadsheet where we basically took the 48-month development plan review process annotated in the UDC, and we linked specific points and nodes as prescribed in the 48-month process. They involve the pre-skinch, the exploratory, and the record plan phases in any kind of development plan. These points were then highlighted in different color schemes. For example, the applicant is highlighted in tan, Newcastle County parts of the plan review process highlighted in green, and where we interface with state agencies highlighted in purple. I know you can't see it too well because it's a very complex process, but in the lower left, it kind of zooms in a little bit, and it takes you through a timeline, 48 months, even broken down into weeks, on when each one of these steps in the process occurs. Yes, sir.
Yes, Reed, just parenthetically, I'd like to note that Land Use Department came and made a presentation to County Council about the fact that County Land Use Department can compress all at once its approval process, but until and unless there was an integration with principally the State Department of Transportation, we're never going to shorten that process in order to foster economic development, which is why our County Executive has encouraged and fostered an integration of land use and transportation planning on this county-wide basis. I just want to put that point in, because that purple line extends over all the other little smaller bars of the county.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And what this plan also did is it went out past 48 months to identify the other parts of land use that touches the program and the process. The construction site application with our engineers, the permit processors, when the developer comes in and applies for a building permit, Joey Roberto's group that goes out and does inspections, the code enforcement officers that have to go in and look for property maintenance issues. So this isn't just about planners. This takes the entire compass of the Land Use Department, all the different entities that work in the land use. But basically, we put this up, and we looked at where can we enhance and make improvements to the process. Land Use reviewed the development process and then formed a technology committee, as I was explaining earlier, and it's back in detail on Slide 3, to review software on the market which might enhance the land development review process. And then we put that into our FY 15 Budget Summit, which is known as Electronic Plan Review. The result of our technology assessment and reviewing of existing software on the market was to further inquire about electronic plan review. So where does the Land Use Department go from here? We have developed a request for proposal, which would incorporate electronic plan review into our process, which would, one, decrease the planning and engineering review time, two, automate the uploading of associated plans and documents into Hanson and App Extender, and also, three, facilitate concurrent and parallel planning with state agencies. That's our goal, and that's what we'd like to do for the RFP.
What's the timeline on that RFP, Reed?
You just, yeah, let me hear, sir. We're looking, we're, bottom line upfront, we're looking to put out an RFP in about three weeks, once we get Council approval. We'd like to get the applications, review them, have a vendor selected towards the end of June, and the 1st of July with Council approval, start to implement the Electronic Plan Review. I'd like it to be completed around January, February of 2015, and then it'll be fully implemented. That's the goal. But we have to see what proposals we get back from potential vendors on when the go-time would be.
Very good.
The current process is, as you know, sir, is sequential in nature. It goes from one reviewer to another reviewer, and then to a third reviewer. Again, the system relies on manual uploads of all the data, documents, and plans submitted into the system. The Electronic Plan Review System allows for concurrent review and parallel planning. Documents are uploaded on our web server, and then automated notices are sent out to these reviewers, letting them know that specific planning documents are available for them to download, review, and then upload their comments into a web-based cloud, back to the applicant, so the applicant then can make changes to the various plans in the pre-skinch, exploratory, or record plan process. Each time an application or applicable document reports and revised plans are uploaded, received, reviewed, comments are submitted and approved, the Hanson Project Planning Application will then be automatically updated. That SLD tab that has all those dates there, again, right now, some technician has to enter in the date. We'd like to get a software system that, once the part of that plan is approved, it automatically uploads Hanson, so very little interface with a person. It will streamline the process quicker, get information uploaded in real time. The last part here, the Planning Review Process, or the Electronic Plan Review Concept, is documented in the Request for Proposal, which will be coming down to Council probably next week, currently being reviewed at the Procurement Office. Once approved, the RFP will be advertised submissions due in May. Review Committee will then select the top three vendors, who in turn will be provided an opportunity to present their product to the Land Use Technology Committee. And then that committee will select the best top vendor. Once that vendor is selected, we'd like that vendor to begin work on or about 1st of July 2014.
Reed?
Sir?
Would you be able to come back at a timely technology subcommittee meeting to make an update after the Land Use Technology Meeting has met?
Yes, sir.
We meet on, once a month, on the, is it the third Tuesday of each, for the third Tuesday of each month?
Okay. So maybe the third Tuesday in June, if we have somebody selected?
Yes, Tuesday, June 17th at 1:30 p.m.
I'll see if we'll have somebody at that time. I'll get back, I'll work with Lou.
Great. Lou, if you can make a note on that, thanks.
Okay, sir, the selected vendor would then review our land development process that we have right now, and develop a workflow similar to what you see up here. The RFP requests a system that mirrors the UDC Plan Review Process, pre-skinch, exploratory, record plan process. But it also will be requested to look at the Building Plan Review Process. So we have two functions here that we're requesting, the Land Development Plan Review Process, and then also, when the applicant comes in for a building permit, the Building Plan Review. You know, the applicant comes in with all their plans of the buildings and things like this. That can be uploaded in electronic fashion, comments sent to the Fire Marshal, anybody else, when that person comes in for a building permit. So two parts there, land development and then the building plan. I provided a link for a typical electronic plan review system. It's developed by OnBase. This short video will provide you a better understanding regarding how a typical electronic plan review system works, and how it might be able to be integrated in Newcastle County. This video is accessible through the Internet right now. It's only meant to depict how an EPR system could work, and is no way an endorsement for this particular product. As you know, sir, that's what the committee will do. They will select the vendor applications through the RFP process. But I thought that you might like to see, the rest of the members might like to see this video, get an idea of how the system works. With your permission, I'd like to.
Yes, Reed, thank you.
Okay. Could just click the link. Expand the size.
Every day, agencies receive multiple copies of large plan sites that are time-consuming to manage and review. And with paper plans, true collaboration and revision management is challenging. How can OnBase help? With Electronic Plan Review, the power of document management makes your process paperless, trackable, and more efficient, speeding up development in your community. With Electronic Plan Review, plans are imported directly into OnBase and automatically routed to necessary reviewers. OnBase enables real-time collaboration for comments and markups, eliminating conflicts and redundancies by allowing departments to review plan sheets simultaneously. You can even track review response times to identify and eliminate bottlenecks in the process. OnBase also tracks resubmissions, so review teams no longer worry about missing key edits or accidentally approving plans with undocumented changes. Plan revisions are displayed with a unique comparison tool that places the revised plan on top of the original, with colorized changes so differences clearly stand out. And with OnBase, your plan reviews are accessible from your existing permitting system without writing a single line of integration code, leveraging your existing IT investments. Because OnBase eliminates paper-based processes, you pursue great initiatives while meeting mandated deadlines. Combined with automated plan routing and tracking, you increase transparency into your planning processes and support development in your community. And the same enterprise content management solution that meets these needs can be used across your entire government enterprise, from accounts payable in Human Resources to GIS, Public Works, and Health and Human Services. With OnBase, you answer department challenges like plan reviews and leverage your investment to meet the needs of your enterprise.
Reed, I just want to interject how exciting the future is and the future's now.
Yes, sir. And what this process is going to do, again, it's our hope that it's going to expedite it, and it's going to help, it's going to help answer the call of our human capital, which, as you know, is kind of going down because of all the retirements that we've been having in land use. So if we can take some of the manual part of plan review out and automate it, then the employees that we have right now can do other things involved in the myriad of actions that land use is involved in.
Can you put a pause on that?
Sure.
When you say digitalize some of the process, in our next incremental step, what still remains in 20th century paper, and generically, what gets digitalized?
I believe, just all myself, that everything can be digitalized. I mean, we're getting away from paper. The old way was, for example, Friday, a plan submission came in, 15 copies of a plan came in, it was this high of folded plans. It then is categorized in a folder and archived in what they call Iron Mountain, forever and ever, for FOIA, people can track it, you put it in a slip. This now will be digital so that you can actually retrieve information electronically, instantaneously. There, I know the attorneys are talking about the FOIA process, but it's going to save in space, you're not going to be cutting down the trees for the hard copy, and more importantly, you know, when a plan comes in and a planner spends 20 days, because by law, they have 20 days to review that plan, and they go through all those pages, a plan submission can be 12 to 170 pages. They make their comments, they could upload their comments on the electronic version, version 4, 3, 2, 1, so on. But every time it comes back, they can overlay their original comments, and these products will go right to where those changes were and show that planner or that engineer, they either made the changes, or they add something new that wasn't on the original plan. So I think it's going to be better transparency, and the future is now, we need to get away from the paper.
If I may interject again, I know you mentioned, maybe with some scorn, attorneys guilty, my law firm and Delaware State Bar Association is the first state in the country to be totally digitalized. All filing is e-filing. And yes, we use Iron Mountain as well for our paper documents, but law offices now have a library just for show. We do all our research and keep all our records and documents electronic. It has changed our industry as well, and it's time for our government to move into the 21st century. So I applaud you and the GORD Administration and Daniel for the work that you're doing in this regard. Continue, Reed.
Yes, sir, I think we had a question back.
Joe Roberto. One of the other pieces that it really does is it helps our customer. I mean, when we're talking about not only saving our internal customers, and which, for us, saving time, employing time, that type of thing, we're really saving the customer or the public from having to come into the office, from having to pay permit runners and things of that nature. Mrs. Fogerty's vision is to keep people out of the building, so to speak, to not have to take the time to drive in, and if there is a failure or something that needs to be corrected, you know, you're sending that out electronically, you're not asking people to come in the office multiple times, and you're also not asking, you know, because we'll be able to fire it all to the other agencies, you know, it could become, you know, it's a one-stop shopping from your home or from your business. That's our ultimate goal, as our employees have gotten less and less. That's the answer for the future for us, and to keep people, you know, from the comforts of their business, from their homes, and be able to communicate with us through these technology means.
It's exciting, yes. Fabrice Dubac, a question in regards to the RFP or the platform that would be decided upon. It looks like OnBase from Island appears to be the ideal scenario, based on what you just showed up on the screen. When you talk about doing an RFP, are you looking at leveraging some of the technology, some of the services, or SharePoint, or some established technology that you have in a house, to try to embed it with something where you can build a platform around it? Or are you already kind of preconceived, sold idea and saying, hey, Island has a solution for us, this is the way to go? I just want to find out a bit more about that.
No, it's a very good read back from the Land Use Department, and that's why, again, I need to state this. The OnBase was, out of all the different softwares that the Technology Committee looked at that were available online, OnBase was the only one that had this presentation available for anyone to take a look at. There's another vendor called Project Docs, which uses and is heavily involved in the ICC world, uses and are partners with Hanson. There's other firms out there that actually have their own internal plan review software system. We are not married to any of them. That's why we have the Request for Proposal. The Council basically has told us, we follow procurement laws, which we've done, we've written out a request for proposal saying, here's what we're looking for, what other software companies are out there that might be able to provide us the service to meet the parameters as laid out in the RFP. Once we get the documents, submissions in, a team of qualified individuals will look and assess each one of those, each one of those proposals, and then we will pick the best vendor. Don't know if OnBase is going to use it. I do know, sir, the Transportation Department here in Delaware uses OnBase for some of their TIS. Also know that Project Docs is used throughout the country with Hanson. There might be other vendors out there that we're not available, we're not aware of, hence the Request for Proposal. So once we have that, sir, when we have identified somebody, I will come back and brief and update the committee again and let you know who was selected to take the process actually and make it work.
Great. Fab, very good question, Reed, thanks for the follow-up. Any other questions or comments from anyone on this subject before we move to our last topic of the meeting? Hearing none, I'd like to go on to status report on boards and commissions posting to the website. Just as a preface to this, the GORD Administration and CA David Grimaldi have made a commitment to posting to our website information about what the executive branch is about, how the flowchart works. how the flow chart works, how the boards and commissions function, their business day-to-day. It is, it's a commitment that is not as simple as one would think, because some boards and commissions are under the executive branch, some are autonomous or semi-autonomous, like our quadri judicial branch, the Board of Adjustment, and some are under the legislative branch, county council. So it, it requires collaboration and baby steps. What I asked my aide Lou Hinkle to do is pull off the county website, what information is available about each of the various executive branch, legislative branch, boards and commissions, so we know where we are as a starting point. Some post annual reports, some didn't post the annual report last year, year or two. These aren't missing for any intentional reason. It's simply that previous administrations didn't really have organizational skills to cover this. This is administration that wants to try to do that. And Daniel Sheerquest is here representing the administration. So we're certainly going to use this, this matrix, this checkerboard, if you will, as sort of a checklist as we go forward to try to, to deal with the various issues. Lou, are you ready to go?
Not yet.
One of the things that we talked about, for example, is the administration. Who are the executive assistants? How do they relate in a flow chart to the CA or the county executive? That would be one, directly with the executive branch. Then Board of Adjustment or Planning Board, who's the chairman? Who are the members? Where is their bio? So the public knows who's serving. When is there an opening? So someone doesn't need to do anything more than click. Where are their decisions? What's the history of their stare decisis or decisions? Some of them will permit audio recording, let's do that. Some of them may get to video recording. Some take meeting minutes. Some may have decisions that can be archived and researched. So these are the sorts of things. This is not by any means a complete compendium of issues, but these are the ones we started off. First, this is a spreadsheet that the administration prepares. This is not the one that we prepared. So Lou, let's just walk through this particular spreadsheet.
Well, this is actually from our office. It's from the office of the council president, where they keep a record of the boards and commissions, and by colors you can see whether or not they are council appointees or county executive administrative appointees.
I think this information comes from the executive branch, and then it comes through our office of council president, which disseminates it. Valerie, or do you know how we all get it?
Anthony DiFiori is the one who presents it to us-
Right.
-as the council president's legislative meeting.
Right. So as Lou just said, we have various boards and commissions on the left column, starting at the top. There's the Board of Adjustment. You'll see that there are seven slots, and you'll see that all of them are filled, but one is expired in the brown. And all of these are county executive appointments with council consent. There are other appointments that are county executive appointment with county executive consent, date of appointment and term expires. That, that's one data array, and then it goes through the other boards as well. One of the Board of Assessment Review is one that I've made a proposal to reform because it was, made sense in the old council districts when you had six council districts. So we're thinking of going instead to 12 council districts. It would be state legislation. Had Carol Doolin draft some legislation, it will be coming to an executive committee for a workshop, parenthetically. So we goes to Audit Committee, Community Services Advisory Board, and then, Lou, if you could scan down, you'll see some of the other boards that are here. Pension Board, Ethics Commission, Financial Advisory Council, Fire and Ambulance Advisory Board, and Historic Review Board, Housing Advisory Board, Human Resources Advisory Board, and Library Advisory Board. You get the idea. So this is one tool that we have, and this is an electronic posting, so it's both paper and electronic. So now, I asked Lou to put together another matrix, and it also ended up in column form. First, I said, Lou, let's list all the boards and commissions. That acronym DRAC that appears halfway down stands for Design Review Advisory Committee. It's sort of like a mini Planning Board for areas that are village-like qualities, like Centerville, or Hockesson, or Claymont. But let's show them the spreadsheet you've got there, Lou.
Yeah, I was trying to get to that other one where it, it has the graph, as you said.
Yes.
I don't know which one it is.
It's a matrix.
You have it said all Word docs.
Yeah.
Is that where it is?
Scroll down.
Go back for once.
So while Lou's doing this, we'd like to be able to have searchable decisions. Searchable for who are the members of these public boards, these advisory commissions? What are their bios? Because they're, they're public documents once they're submitted, but they sort of get lost in the shuffle, and then nobody knows who these folks are, and, or when their terms, it's some sort of magical secret. It shouldn't be. It should be public data. And there's a commitment by both the executive legislative branch to make it public. Okay, Lou, is this, this is what, this is one iteration of what I've asked you to prepare for me. At the top, we have the Board of Adjustment. Agenda, schedules are posted, members are posted, audio track, no, minutes, no, annual report, last update in 2009, for example.
That was as of April 1st.
As of April 1st. So Daniel, we're hoping that this will be a helpful tool for you and the administration to use. Can you give us some, what are the administration thoughts on how to test this, to have someone in each board or commission, or who would be responsible?
Well, I know inside, there are people who handle updating boards and commissions. Typically, as you mentioned, some can be on the executive side, some is on the legislative, so it gets a little difficult. But typically, within a board, there's a, an appointed person who will handle the updates of that. I think with this particular document, it's a lot easier to find out which one is, you know, out of sync, and then from that point, find out who that particular person is, make sure the updates are there. I think it might get a little, wouldn't say cumbersome, but it might get a little interesting of who that person, who is going to review it, and then request that individual to actually make the updates, if it's a legislative branch employee or executive. Who will be that person, I think is yet to be determined. But I think with that file that Lou showed, I think it really helps drill down to see where we're lacking and where we need some, some attention.
Good. Well, we're, this is collaborative. I, I thought that this tool, putting together, simply extracting it from our public records, would be helpful to both the executive branch, to our legislative branch, and to those that are independent of both, the quadri judicial arms, like the Board of Adjustment, sort of like our, our court system, to determine how it would be done. And then we want to, to institutionalize it so that it becomes a practice that continues beyond the time that we're all here serving the public. So that, that'll be the challenge. And although it seems quite simple, it, it's going to take a, a commitment from all of us to make sure that, that as a legacy, this public documentation continues into the future. Lou, did you have anything to add?
No, no, this is just another example of, this is pulled directly off the website, where it does show the, the committee, the members, their contact information. These are, of course, right here, hypertext links. Links are when you're on the site, you can contact them directly. Tells you what the board consists of, what its responsibilities are, and then the information that is provided to them. Now, this is already currently on the, the website, so you can go to any one of the boards that are there, and it'll show you the information there. Some, here, you can see that annual reports are available annually, and it shows links where you can go to their reports if you want to view them. And as Daniel said, some of the responsibilities of posting that information to the websites are, are varied throughout the committees and commissions. So it's not a one-size-fits-all issue, and they meet differently, they meet, they don't meet regularly as some committees do, so sometimes getting that information updated on the website doesn't, isn't a one, one-size-fits-all issue. So it's something, like you said, it, it'll be collaborative.
So what I think procedurally, that each month, we'll sort of go through this and see where we are. In the interim, if, Daniel, if you'd be our contact on the executive branch, and maybe help us to who we should be contacting-
Absolutely.
-with each of the boards. Just, and Lou, you'll be obviously the contact for the technology committee. Since we have Valerie here in the room, would you be interested in working with Lou on this, or you may have a full array of activities? I don't want to volunteer you on anything else.
Sure. I'll, I'd be happy to help.
That'd be great. Thank you. Thank you. So, go ahead, Lou.
Well, this information is already provided to our council president's office when there are changes in membership of the committees and as such, but, and you're referencing what other information for the website?
We want to get it electronically posted. We want to have a standard operating procedure where, for example, when someone gives us a bio or curriculum vitae for consideration to a board, that immediately gets scanned if it's not sent to us electronically already, and gets posted to the particular correct page in this electronic data sheet. And if Valerie and you could sit down with Anthony to talk to him about that, because a lot of that information comes into his office, I greatly appreciate it. And then we come back each month and, and say, this last month, we focused on X, Y, and Z tasks, and rather than trying to eat the whole cookie box in one month. And then Daniel will come back and say, this is what we've accomplished. But at least having these spreadsheets, we'll share them digitally with Valerie, Lou, Daniel, and you can share with whomever you'd like on your executive-
There are people already appointed to, to, to these particular tasks, so I think I just might bring them in, that might help speed things along a little bit.
Right. Having this collection of information will have, speed it along.
Absolutely.
And then we can just make a report each month on something that both branches are committed to, we're just seeing how we're progressing along that way.
Absolutely.
Great. Any other comments?
I just wanted to say real quick, the land use, this particular thing is, as we've mentioned, it is a huge benefit to both the citizens and the county. It really saves a lot of work, a lot of legwork for the individual who are going for permits. It makes it a one-stop shop. I think it's a great design. I think it's, I think it's really going to be beneficial to everyone, and, you know, once again, IS is involved with that as well, and it's, it's beneficial to everybody. I think it's, it was handled perfectly from, from beginning to end.
I, I just want to say that this ad hoc committee now, obviously, has become more important because we're, we're now going to be not only disseminating to council, but to the public through the video and audio links of this information, that anyone in the comfort of their home can on-demand watch this information. And right now, it's just available on my own personal website through YouTube, but ultimately, it's just simply, it's a beta test, and ultimately, it, it will be available on the county website as well. Without any further ado, I'm going to adjourn this meeting now at 2:34 PM, and note that our next meeting will be on Tuesday, May 15th, at 1:30 PM, back here on the eighth floor of the city-county building. This is Bob Weiner, Chairman of the Technology Subcommittee of Newcastle County Council. Thank you very much.